We are back from executive session and continuing our regular meeting with item number five, approval of the minutes from March 28, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Vice Chair Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion on the minutes of March 28? Seeing none. All in favor?
Opposed.
Motion passes. Item number six, donations. We have a request from the library to accept and expend a gift or gifts to the library from various donors with thanks.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion on the donations to the library? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed. Motion passes. Item 6B, request from council on aging to accept and expend gifts or gifts to the council on aging from various donors with thanks.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Vice Chair Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Before we move on, I did just want to mention that we are not going to discuss item 11B, the review of the flag policy. The Human Rights Commission has asked for a delay on that so that they can do some additional consultations. So we will likely be discussing that at the next meeting. Let's see. Do we have people here for the articles, Steve? Do we need?
Yeah.
We need Mr. Leone.
If you wanted, we could do 7B.
Okay.
Or 8B, excuse me.
8B. Yes, so let's set that. Okay, so 8B, we need to set a public hearing date as April 25, 2022, at 7:03 for a liquor license for Magos Incorporated doing business as Bellino's located at 146 Lowell Street.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion on this? Seeing none. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. All right. We could do the warrants.
I would request that you do the warrant later because there's a couple of articles that the town council actually needs to vote on first.
Ah, very good. Okay, so that's an important sequencing.
Madam Chair, do you want to do item 14?
The warrants.
Yes, well, let's do that, Ms. Counselor Chines.
I always look forward to that.
I know. It's the most scintillating part of it. So I signed last week four warrants, warrants 32, 34, 36, and 38 totaling $23 million plus regular payroll, which is generally about $2.5 million per warrant. The full details are in the packet. Nothing out of the ordinary relative to what we usually see, but certainly happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions for Counselor Chines? No?
Madam Chair, we could do 9B and C and D and E if you wish, because that's just myself.
Yes, let's do that. Let's start with those.
Okay, so there are a number of articles that are sponsored by the town council, I guess just by, historically by the town council. It is your budget after all. Article, one of the articles at town meeting is the debt service fund, and this is how we pay our existing debts. This is not new debt. This is an existing debt, and it will handle our debts for the Galvin School and the other bonds that we have, which would include the athletic fields, Walton School, the various fire trucks, the road bond, drainage, the public safety building, and a couple of other items. So that amount at town meeting, I think it was in your packet, will be looking for $4,133,698. That will be, I think, article three at town meeting, actually, and that includes the amount for the Galvin debt exclusion is included in there. It's level funded with last year, and it is in addition to the $1 million that comes right off the top of our taxes, which was our tax levy, which was created by a legislative act some many, many years ago. So kind of our total debt is 5.1 million, and of that we appropriate 4.1 million at town meeting. So it's $4,133,698.
For debt service. So we need a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Seconded.
So moved by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos for debt service of $4,133,698. Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
I'll keep going then.
Yes, please.
We'd also be requesting $202,500 for supplemental appropriations. Those will become out of free cash. These are for budgets this year that we need some extra money in. These could technically go to the reserve fund, but reserve fund is an emergency that we don't know about. We know about these now. God forbid something happened between now and June, then I wouldn't want to not have enough money in the reserve fund. So over the last few years, we've kind of gone this route. I think it's a little bit safer financially. So this is made up of two amounts, of two big items here. One are legal expert witnesses on the Walton School project. Board members may recall that we did have a contractor issue there. We brought in some legal experts, and through Attorney Mullin, we got some great result there. So that's of that, that's $82,500. And you may recall when we did our budget due to COVID and Manning and things like that, the fire department had a pretty hefty overtime. They had exceeded that, so we're looking for, although that's whittling down a little bit each month now, we're looking for $120,000 for fire department overtime. So that's 202,500.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
So motion made by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion or questions, Mr. Mayor? Seeing none. All in favor of supplemental appropriations in the amount of $202,500. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and members of the board, or the council, I should say. Police and Fire indemnification, which is another article that does come up from year to year, and this will also come out of free cash. This meeting, we're spending it in this year's budget, this covers costs, medical costs of injuries sustained by police and firefighters in the line of duty. And the reason why it's done this way is, A, health insurance won't cover it because it's work-related, and B, if we were to add this into our workers' compensation insurance, that would skyrocket. So there is a state statute that allows you kind of to pay this as you go, and we kind of fund this as we go year to year. There are, after this money is appropriated and spent, each kind of the fire bucket and the police bucket will have $20,000 left in it, which we want to have a little bit to keep it going. I will tell you that of this $130,000 that I'm requesting tonight, $10,000 is for some police injuries, and $120,000 is for one fire injury and one fire illness or sickness that is job-related. So we'd be looking for $130,000 there.
Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
So moved by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion on the police and fire indemnification? Counselor Dombrowski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Steve, could you just explain to us how this compares to, say, other years?
You know, because there was one big issue in this one, that's an anomaly. Usually, when we come in like 10, 20, 30 grand each, you know, every few years we'll come in for that. Yeah, it's usually pretty modest. This is a...
I recall it being not this high before.
Yeah, this is, this is a, this was a serious issue.
Right.
Any additional questions or discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of police and fire indemnification in the amount of $130,000. In favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. And the last one, I think I can squeeze in the last one, too.
Yeah, go ahead and go.
So our bylaw review committee will be looking at the zoning bylaw this year. They did, or this session as they go through. We did not do the zoning bylaw when they looked at the bylaws a few years ago, and I think this would probably come part and parcel with the master plan. But we do need to recertify what's in our bylaw right now. I will tell you zoning is very, very technical, and the devil is certainly in the details there. So in talking to members of the, presumed members of the new bylaw review committee and members of the previous bylaw review committee, and with Town Council, and he and I have talked about it, we really do need a zoning kind of expert to kind of help shepherd us through that. So we'd be looking for $50,000 for that, and that will be coming out of tax levy, so it won't even take effect until next fiscal year. But that, keeping it in an article would allow us to put this over a couple of fiscal years if we needed to. So we'd be looking for $50,000 there.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. Discussion on this item. Counselor Chines.
Just add a question on this. First of all, I'm very supportive of doing this. I mean, I think the devil is in the details when it comes to zoning, and so I think, you know, we definitely need the expertise. I guess the question I have is, is $50,000 enough? It feels like, because it's been a while since we've done sort of a recertification of our zoning law, bylaws, it feels like you could get into a whole lot of work really quickly here that could add up.
Yeah, I think you could, but most of what I've been seeing and talking to the other my fellow managers around here is in the 30 to 50 range, so I think we'll be okay. And you know what? If I have to come back for more, we will. There's not a, nothing to prevent us from coming back in November or next spring and say, hey, we need more. Okay.
Any additional questions, or Counselor Dombrowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just say that I think this is another opportunity to reach out to the community to say that if you're looking to make an impact here, it's through zoning, and it's through our zoning bylaws. Because by the time things get to ZBA, they're, for the most part, applying, well, they always are, applying the law, but there's limited discretion that's built into that. So I think it's important that anyone that has concerns about zoning, the direction of zoning, understanding that we have a lot of changes coming up, too, relative to, especially transit-oriented development, zoning, and ways in which that can be addressed. It's just so incredibly important that if you are concerned about it, if you have an issue, if you like it, if you want to expand it, you know, whatever your position may be, this is really the opportunity to do that, I think, in a meaningful way. I think it has far more of a profound impact long-term, and I know, and with your work with Master Plan, it's going to be huge, a huge part of the consideration that you're all going to give to it. But I just can't stress enough, this is where, this is where you can affect change in whatever direction you think is appropriate for the town.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of recertification of zoning bylaws, funding of $50,000? Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so we are right at 7 o'clock. Sheri, do we have any public engagement?
No public engagement tonight.
Okay. Thank you. So we can't start the public meeting quite yet. We could do the slate for the appointments on item 13. There's actually, we have kind of two items on 13A. Give me one second here. Signed it. In our packets, we have a slate of appointees for committees where there were essentially kind of not, nothing competitive, meaning there were either just enough people to, if I can find my list, to fill the roles. And... What's that? Oh, I don't have the pages because I printed them out. What do we have there?
I think you just had it. No?
No, that's the non-slate one. See, I should do things on computer. Here it is. I just didn't mark it. Okay, so we have a slate in the packets for, I guess I'll just read the whole slate, and then we can vote on it as a slate. Advisory Board of Public Works, Elena Proakis Ellis; Albion Cultural Exchange Committee, Donna Murphy and Mary and Joyce Schilling; Arts Counselor Marlene Valdewish; Capital Planning Committee, Phil Renzi, Philip Renzi; Commission on Disabilities, Lorna Davidson Connelly; Paula Thompson and Judith Tanner; Council on Aging, Susan Jepson; Suzanne Powers; Christina Dela Croce; Historical Commission, Daniel Benjamin and Catalina Driver; Human Rights Commission, Daniella Nedbalik; Sheri Oaken and Donna Murphy; Permanent Building Committee, Joseph Bertrand; John McDonald; Thomas Galvin; and Veterans Advisory Board, Daniel Benjamin and William Kiran. Do I have a motion to move the slate?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Vice Chair Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion on this slate?
I was very grateful for the different committees to comment on who they were recommending, why they were recommending them, even if the, there was no... why they were recommending them, even if the, there was no competition. It just gave a fuller picture that we're appointing excellent people.
Yes.
But I really appreciate the effort that they put into that.
Good. Counselor Dombrowski?
I'll just say, I really appreciate everybody who's willing to step up and serve. The only thing that stands out to me is I was hopeful that we'd have more people applying for these because there's, there's a lot of vacancies that are being filled, but not a lot of excess applicants, you know, to, for us to make decisions. While it's always easier to not have to make a decision for these appointments, it would be nice to have seen, you know, so I think maybe next year, as we just continue on this journey of trying to have outreach, maybe thinking about other ways we can try to get more people, you know, to, to apply going forward. But this is a great, I mean, it's a great slate, certainly.
Yeah, and I think so. And we're between in-person and Zoom, and so it doesn't surprise me. It's a tricky year. So, okay. I'll, I'm just going to say I'm going to recuse myself from the Permanent Building Committee, Sheri, for the record, since my husband's on that one. But I'm going to move the slate, having recused myself from that particular one. Okay, so all in favor of the slate as read? Opposed? This motion passes seven to zero. Okay, we need to open the public hearing. For? So we have a public hearing for liquor license for LMB LLC doing business as Laurie's 909 located at 93 New Salem Street. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion? All in favor of opening the public hearing? Aye. Oh, we need roll call. My apologies. Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, so we have the public hearing open. Mr. McGrail, are you representing Laurie's 909?
I am, Madam Chair.
Very good. If you'd like to proceed, you're certainly welcome to.
Yes.
I think Laurie Rizzo was here also. Laurie, can you turn on your camera if you have one? The bottom left of your screen? Oh, great.
Good.
You can see your forehead.
Here we are.
I'll sit up a little taller.
Ah, you're frozen, but that's okay. I'll start with her. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council. For the record, Attorney Brian McGrail with offices at 607 North Avenue in Wakefield, representing the applicant LMB LLC, DVA Laurie's 909. With me tonight, as you can surmise now, is Laurie Rizzo. Laurie is the owner. She is the member and manager of LMB LLC. And she's also the proposed manager of the all-alcohol license application that's before your board. We are requesting on her behalf an all-alcohol license for her restaurant at 93 New Salem Street. Formal locations of D'Amici's, you might recall that before Laurie moved there in 2016. LMB and Laurie have been in business in Wakefield since 2012. The restaurant Laurie's 909 was a very popular and successful restaurant. Some of you may remember it on Tuttle Street in Wakefield. It was an operation from 2012 to 2016. During that period, it did have an all-alcohol license and it was frequented by many Wakefield residents and folks from surrounding communities. Very popular. In 2017, because of her high demand for corporate catering services, Laurie closed the restaurant on Tuttle Street and moved to the current location at 93 New Salem Street. And she shifted her business plan to virtually 100% catering with no restaurant. And part of her catering service is involved serving some of the elementary schools at St. Joseph's Parish and St. Patrick's in Stonham, providing lunches, and also a lot of corporate catering. But Laurie missed the restaurant component of her business because it's in her DNA. So, and also, there's been a lower demand for corporate catering because of COVID and, you know, work from home. And there's been a high demand for Laurie from some of her former Wakefield customers who constantly ask her, when are you going to be motivated enough to, motivated enough to open up again? So what is she, what she's proposing to do is to open a smaller version of Laurie's 909 at 93 Salem Street, only proposing to have 18 seats. Laurie is there all the time if you want to go by and visit her. And I, I think I should point out, while she was operating as Laurie's 909 on Tuttle Street from 2012 to 2016, she did not have a single issue with her all-alcohol license. There was never backed before your board or any complaints that had to be dealt with by your board for incidences related to the alcohol license. The property at 93 New Salem Street is located in the industrial zoning district and restaurants are allowed as a byright use in that district. As you may have noticed from the application package that we submitted, Laurie is TIPS certified. She has been for quite a while in good standing. And she also recognizes, we've gone through the rules and regulations, that any of her personnel and staff will have to be certified TIPS and report that to your board. She's also committed to obtaining the required liability insurance, assuming that she's able to get the license from your board and then subsequently the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. So with that said, Laurie, could you maybe tell the board type of fanfare that you anticipate at your restaurant? So they know the type of restaurant that you'd be operating?
Absolutely. As, as Brian had noted, that we did move our business plan to corporate catering for the past four years. Unfortunately, due to COVID, corporate catering has been nill and void at this point. Everyone's working from home. So in lieu of actually closing the business, we opted to, let's go back to being a restaurant and takeout. So where, we did some, a lot of construction in the front, built a bar, some in seating. And we're looking to reinvent Laurie's 909. Fresh fish, steak tips, hamburgers, a lot with fried chicken. There's no like the Chick-fil-A or Kentucky Fried Chicken in this area. So fried chicken to go and, you know, wings and, and whatnot. So we're hoping to do takeout and obviously people, if they want to come in and sit down, have a fried chicken sandwich and a beer or steak tips and burgers, fried fish. We're just trying to survive at this point. So we're hoping that, you know, with this addition, that we can continue to be a successful restaurant in Wakefield.
Great.
Madam Chair, we're happy to answer any questions that board members might have.
Thank you very much. I will open it up to questions from the board. Counselor Dombrowski?
Mr. Mayor, can you tell us how many licenses we have still available?
For all alcohol licenses, the ABCC would allot Wakefield 29, all alcohol. We have 20 that are active right now. So this would be the 21st, if done.
Any additional questions? Concerns?
I would just say that, just going forward, recognizing that this would leave us with eight, I don't know what, how long the process would be to try to add in some additional. I'd hate to see us get close to not having enough. We have a lot of new development we're talking about here. I think Foundry, I think we're in Molease, the Molease building, something that comes of that. I just want to make sure that we always have a comfortable buffer. Not saying we have to issue all of them, but at least know that we have that flexibility. Because I think from an economic development standpoint, absent that, we could run into some issues here.
It is an issue statewide. A lot of communities are going for special legislation to increase and it is something we'll keep an eye on.
I would just like to see us speak into, you know, if we can sort that process, just to have that bandwidth. Because I think we're going to.
I'm sure it's not a fast process.
Exactly. And I don't want, I don't want to get down to two, two licenses that you're left and then have to kind of scramble to figure out, so we don't turn away other businesses going forward. But I, I think, I mean Laurie's is well-established within the community. I think she's done a great job. I personally have enjoyed her food.
We're very happy to have you reopening.
Thank you.
Counselor Danahy?
Well, I just want to say that I'm fully supportive of it. I, I was at Laurie's 909 a lot and I miss it. So, and it was always, it was always really well-run and there were never any issues there. And I think that Laurie's 909 has always been a really great community partner too in supporting some of the community events that we've had. So welcome back. This is very, we're all very excited.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, so I think we do need to open it up for public comments. So Sheri, if there's anyone from the public who would like to weigh in? If you can hear that now?
Yep, I, yep, I did not get anybody.
Okay. All right, so hearing no public. And anything additional from the counselor, counsel? We can make a motion.
I was going to say from the public, I don't know if the council got this. We did get a letter from Lisa Nakool, who was in a butter.
Oh, okay, no, did you hear that?
In support. As Director of Butters of Laurie's 909, we're in full support of her receiving liquor license and opening a new restaurant on New Salem Street. Laurie's always been a great neighbor. We think a restaurant in the center of New Salem would be great for the community and neighborhood.
Good. Oh, that's great. Good.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Please.
So I don't know if the, if the council was going to discuss hours of operation, which you usually do. Because that would usually, I think Sheri would be noted on the license, right? ABC, so you'd want to see that. And then also, in cases, under the statute, in cases where the license, whether it's protested or not, if it's within 500 feet of a church or a school, you have to make a specific finding that you find it will not be detrimental to the school or the church. And this is within 500 feet of the church. That was on the list that we had to get noticed to. So that's required by the statute to make that finding as part of your vote, if you would please consider that.
Okay. Thank you for pointing that out.
And what will the hours be?
Is it on the application?
What we, what Laurie is requesting is basically 11, 11 to 1, which is pretty standard. She doesn't think she'll ever be open that late. But, you know, you know, that, that would be the norm that your council would normally approve. Cannot open until noon time on Sunday. But you can authorize that to, to open sooner. So we would specifically request to authorize to open by 11 on Sundays in case she decided she wanted to do some type of brunch.
Okay. Any discussion about the times? And so we also need to discuss the impact on schools and churches?
Just the church.
Just the church, was, which is, what churches within 500?
It must be the property line of St. Lawrence Church.
St. Lawrence, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It wouldn't affect St. Lawrence at all.
I was going to say, driving-wise or walking-wise, it would be a lot more than 500 feet. I would, I mean, maybe.
It must be, by the way, the crow flies.
Geometric standpoint, it's 500 feet, but.
Okay. So are there any concerns about that?
I don't think there would be any concerns.
Okay.
Geographically, no.
Okay. Anything else that we need to cover specifically so that we can get this in shape to, to go to the next step?
So, Madam Chair, I would be in favor of then saying 7:00 AM to 1:00 AM, seven days a week, to allow for the brunch option.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve the application with the hours of 7:00 AM to?
11:00 AM.
I'm sorry, 11:00 AM.
To 1:00.
To 1:00 PM, 7:00 AM. 1:00 AM.
Madam Chair, I would say to be consistent with our other restaurants, when we've started, it's 10:00 on Sundays for brunch.
10:00 on Sundays.
For early rises, like with kids that want to go out and get out there quickly.
Okay, so let me try this again.
10:00 to 1:00 on Sundays and 11:00 to 1:00 on weekdays and Saturdays.
10:00 to 1:00 on Sundays and 11:00 AM to 1, 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM, yes. Every other day of the week. Do I, we have a motion and we have a second?
Second.
Okay. So motion made by Counselor Dombrowski, seconded by Counselor Santos. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations and welcome back.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Okay. We need to close the public hearing. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
So moved by Counselor Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. Discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counselor McLean?
Yes.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Aye.
Counselor Chines?
Yes.
Counselor Butt?
Yes.
Counselor Santos?
Yes.
Counselor Danahy?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So the public hearing is closed. Thanks again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we've bounced around much here. Let's see. I believe we are at item number nine. Capital Outlay, if Mr. Leone is on the phone. If he's not on yet, Sheri, we can.
Yeah, I don't see him on, Julie.
Okay, so let's, we'll come back to that. Let's, is Kevin on? Kevin Gill?
Yep, Kevin is here.
Okay. So let's move on to item number 10 and go through the budgets.
He's coming over now.
Okay, great. Start with Budget 29, Department of Public Works.
I need to switch my binders. I know that.
Are they color-coded?
Only in my mind.
Okay, Mr. Gill, the floor is yours.
Thank you. First item tonight is the DPW budget. We're going to revisit the DPW budget. We did review this budget on March 14th. We, we have settled the laborer's contract. There will be an increase to the DPW operational budget of $76,761. And that is to cover the laborer's contract. Under the SOAR budget, there's an increase of $17,798 to the personal services line item. And that is for the contract also. And then for water, the increase was $22,493.
Okay.
The new totals for these budgets, for the DPW operational, it's $6,734,130 with $6,642,408 coming from tax levy and $91,722 coming from available funds. The SOAR budget, the total is now $9,148,699. And the water enterprise total is $6,204,494.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? Steve, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I would just say that the, very, very pleased to the fact that we have settled with our DPW workers. And for the public, these are the men and women that you see jumping in the hole as the water is gushing up or cleaning out the leaves or cleaning, making sure that you're safe when we're going around, some of the items going on in the streets and what have you. And I, I like to say that the people that put the shine on Wakefield, and they do a really great job. So this does include their contract for three years. It's cost of living increases of 2.5% per year, some changes in steps and some other things like that. But really, I think a very sustainable contract for the town. So I would recommend approval.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion to?
So moved. Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion to vote for the revised DPW as outlined by Mr. Gill, made by Counselor Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Budget number 40, Medicare.
Medicare budget, we're requesting an increase to this budget of $41,630 over the current fiscal year. This budget is used to pay the town portion of the Medicare tax, which is a salary-based tax for employees hired after 1986 at a rate of 1.45%. The total budget request for fiscal '23 is $874,280.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on the Medicare budget? Mr. Mayor, did you want to add anything?
No, this is fuel, purely a function of payroll.
Okay. Then we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Vice Chair Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos. Any additional discussion? Seeing no, all in favor of the Medicare budget. All opposed? Motion passes. I, Budget number 41.
Next budget is the group insurance budget. We are requesting an increase to this budget of $920,367 over the current fiscal year. On average, health insurance, health insurance costs are increasing next year approximately 8%. The tax-free portion of this budget is being increased $691,843. The enterprise funds in total have increased $228,524. The enterprise funds in total have increased $228,524. Personal services increased $13,542, which is for contractual and negotiated increases. We did decrease the tax levy portion of this budget by $275,000 by reducing the OPEB line item. We're in the process of doing a new valuation. Currently, our OPEB balance is $25.5 million. On page two of this budget, we also increased the municipal light department's administrative costs $25,000 for additional IT work being handled by our department. The total budget request for fiscal '23 is $15,205,320, with $12,950,855 coming from the tax levy, $450,471 from the Water Enterprise, $312,013 from the SOAR Enterprise, and $1,491,951 coming from the municipal light department.
Thank you. Any discussion?
If I can jump in just to set some context here. This is the budget that used to give me a lot more agita than it does right, than it does now. A little context from people, the then Board of Selectmen had great foresight, working with the Finance Committee, to move out of Master Medical Blue Cross in 2012. Now, that is a lot of issues, and I get it, people loved Blue Cross, Blue Shield, it was easy. We had to go to a managed care system to the GIC. But I'll tell you that in 2012, our tax levy appropriation for insurance was over $14 million, and it did not include any funding for OPEB. And OPEB is, I don't think we even knew what OPEB was at the time, but OPEB is other post-employment benefits, so it's really, it's health insurance and, to a certain extent, some life insurance, but mainly health insurance for employees after they retire. And it's kind of just like having a pension. You need to make sure you have that money appropriated for, that you have it in the bank. Now, we have a pension schedule that I think will finish out in 2032, '33? Kevin, if I'm not mistaken? To make sure that's fully funded? We need to do the same thing with OPEB. And we were one of the few communities around that jumped into doing OPEB, you know, in the beginning, and now we have 25 and a half million in there. We still have a ways to go. We're gonna get a new evaluation this year that will see how far we have to go. But I'll tell you that many of our communities around us, although they've started OPEB, are putting in 50,000 a year, something like that. We're doing a lot more and a lot better. It is, I will tell you, having been on those calls with the rating agencies in New York when we go for our bonds, the fact that we're funding OPEB makes a huge difference. They, it really is, kind of sets us apart and sustains that AAA bond rating, which saves hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest. So it's a great, it's a great feel-good story. So we've had a really good run with the GIC over the years. I will say that unfortunately, you know, like everything else, things go up and down. This has been a year where the GIC has increased their insurance costs more than we would have liked, which is systemic in the industry. And on average, their non-Medicare premiums increased by, you know, six and six, over 6%, 6.2%. Unfortunately, we have done such a great job over the years of moving our employees to plans that give the same exact coverage into lower-cost premium plans, so the employee saves money and the town saves money, that one of those plans actually, within the litany of GIC, it's the Always Plan, increased by 10%. So we had spent the years moving our employees to the least expensive plan, and by the way, it's still less expensive than the vast majority of the plans, but it got a little bit of a bump this year. So hence, a little bit of the bump on this. But the staff there with Karen Doucette and Amy Forzati have done a great job. We spend a lot of time working with the employees, meeting with them even one by one, to find out what's the best plan for them and their family, where can they get the most effective plan, keeping all their doctors, keeping all the stuff. And it's, managed care is hard right now. So a great job done by our staff there, and I will say that even with all this going on, and I say this every year, that I don't think that we're gonna return money at the end of the year, I still think we're gonna return $300,000 or more to the general fund at the budget this year because of the work we've done. And it's kind of hard when we do this budget, because open enrollment is happening now.
Yeah.
So we're kind of figuring this out on the fly, but I'm very comfortable with it. Once we get the valuation on OPEB, if we find that we should put some more in, we have a number of bites at the apple. We'll come back in November, we'll come back in next spring and do it that way. So, great job by the staff, great job by Kevin managing it, and I certainly suggest an approval of this budget. We spend a lot of time on it. And thank you to the employees who work with us on this really well.
Council Chines?
First of all, Mr. May, I, you know, as someone who works in the healthcare industry and has worked for a health insurance company, I mean, this is an area that I know well, and I, you know, say this every year, and I think it needs to be said again, I mean, the fact that we are looking at a budget that is actually less than what we were spending now 10 years ago is incredible. And I hope that people who are watching appreciate just how unusual that is in the world of healthcare. You know, it speaks to just the management acumen of you and your team and Amy Forzati and her team, and I really do kind of commend you for the work that's happened here. It really is a good story for the town.
You know, we meet with the employee, the Public Employee Committee, geez, at least quarterly, if not more often, to kind of go through what can we do to work together. It makes a big difference.
Yep. And it makes a big difference, too, in terms of helping people find the plan that's right for them. I think that's the other piece here that's really important. I mean, it's important to save money for us as the employer, but in terms of supporting our employees, you know, helping them find a plan that meets their needs and also saves them money is really critical. So I appreciate all the work that goes into that. I just wanted to clarify on the OPEB piece. So you mentioned we're pulling down the allocation to OPEB this year, and that's in anticipation of the fact that our OPEB fund has done well because of just market returns in the last couple of years.
Exactly, I think the valuation is gonna show that, so we're still putting 1.4 million into it.
Yep.
Okay, so we brought that down a little bit, kind of takes the edge off the tax levy this year a little bit. And when we get our evaluation, we'll know, but I think we've done really well, because that'll be through, Kevin, that'll be through January 31st, excuse me, December 31st, 2021 or '20?
The valuation?
Yeah.
The valuation that we're going to be doing is as of 7/1/21.
So that'll be actually, probably show pretty good.
Okay. So the idea is, we're kind of projecting the fact that because of the returns in the fund.
Exactly.
We're able to put in less without extending the fully, the funding calculation from a time perspective.
That's exactly our thought process, yes.
All right, I think that makes sense, and certainly, it's comforting to know that if we missed the mark on that, we can come back. I certainly hope we don't have to.
Me too.
But I know we've had some good returns in the fund, so I'm feeling optimistic about that. No, but I think, again, this is a part of the budget that, you know, people probably spend less time thinking about, but it is one that's really important to us, and I just am grateful for the incredible management job that you've done in working through this part of the budget.
It's a great team, from top to bottom. Thank you.
Council Dombrowski?
I'll just say that, speaking from the small employer, private sector side of things, these, you know, these percentage increases, obviously, share are very different. I mean, I think I'm at like 8.2 or 8.3%. So whenever you have government that is pretty much aligned with private sector, I think it's always a good thing. So, you know, we're not out of step, certainly. And I think that the savings you've talked about are just significant. We couldn't be better positioned relative to this. Obviously, the increases are never a great thing, but they're just a part of the process in each year. You know, when you get the resets, you don't know where you're gonna land, and I think that the town has landed very well, taking into account what the trend is, you know, across the board for health insurance. So excellent work.
Thank you.
I just wanna thank Amy and those she works with. Is it Karen?
Karen.
Karen Doucette. I remember when Wakefield was changing, my husband soon, his municipality changed, and the resistance was enormous, because people were afraid. They were losing Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and they didn't know what these other health plans offered, and I know how hard, I remember even thinking, you know, oh my gosh, I'm used to my Blue Cross, Blue Shield I've had for years. So I know how hard that your staff has worked, Steve, back then, to convince folks that it was gonna be okay, and clearly, it is, so.
I mean, it does take more work, it work, it is more managed care.
That's right.
And you've gotta pay attention, you've gotta do the right referrals and all that stuff, but at the end of the day.
Absolutely. They do a great job, so thank you.
Anyone else? So we can have a motion to accept Budget 46?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by Councilor Santos. The, what are we calling this one? The group health insurance for $15,205,320. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, Kevin, we have Budget 47, cable television.
Yes. Last budget is the cable TV public access budget. I've worked very closely with Ryan Boyd and Paul Norman from WCAT on this budget. We're recommending an increase to this budget of $55,266 over the current fiscal year. This budget is funded by receipts from our cable providers, Verizon, Comcast, and RSCN, per the agreement with the town, and it is to be used for public, educational, and governmental cable access. This budget is based on prior and current estimated revenues and is proportioned for the town's agreements. Overall, revenues have been trending down, they've been down about 3.75% or $19,734. The capital revenue is up on this budget, $75,000. The reason it's up $75,000 is we just removed our Verizon contract, the license agreement with Verizon. In that agreement, Verizon is gonna pay us $37,500 per year for the first four years of the contract for capital items. This budget will capture the monies that will come in at the end of this fiscal year, and the monies that will come in next fiscal year. That's why capital revenue is up basically two times the 37,500, or $75,000. The personal services amount of $152,588 is used for salaries over at the Wakefield High School for two teachers in the immediate department. The contractual amount of $353,917 is a payment to WCAT to provide pig access for the town. The total budget request for fiscal '23 is $606,505.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the cable television budget? Council Dombrowski?
I just wanted to mention that I had a really good conversation with Ally Hilton and Ryan Boyd about this just recently, and my biggest concern with this, with WCAT is that we're not on a sustainable path to have a sustainable budget and robust programming going forward. The, people cutting the cord is obviously having a significant impact, and when you just project out, the numbers just don't support being able to continue to even provide service at the current level going forward. So I think this is something that needs to be on our radars in a meaningful way, and something that we have to be thinking about how we can partner better with WCAT or any other outside entities to make sure that we have something, because I'm sure people who are watching us on WCAT tonight will agree with that. But I think, you know, they've done the best they can to pivot. They've adapted to technology, they're streaming live on Facebook, they're doing all the sorts of things that they can do to try to embrace technology versus push it away, understanding that, you know, consumer preferences have changed, but we don't have a sustainable model here. And, you know, I'm trying to like, you know, sound the alarms now on that, I think we all, many of us probably feel the same way. We have to figure out a better way to do this going forward, or we're gonna have a real problem. And I think, I look at our community access television versus a lot of other communities that I won't name, but just the depth and breadth of programming and original content and games and everything else, I mean, there's so much that this station does, and there's so much more they want to do, and I'd hate to see funding stand in the way of that. And so, you know, there's nothing we can act on tonight, I recognize, but I just want everyone to understand that, you know, there is a crisis afoot with this station, and we have to figure out what we can do as a community.
Council Danahy?
Yeah, I absolutely agree. I absolutely agree with that, and I think that what WCAT did during the pandemic was really amazing, is that it not only brought town council and school committee, but all these other meetings that people were able to attend as a result of, you know, WCAT being a really great partner of bringing democracy to our community, which I think is priceless. And I agree, we do need to put that on our radar screen and make sure that WCAT is supported moving forward, because they do do a great job, and they wanna do even more, so we should, I feel like we need to be, find a way to support that.
Great. Couldn't agree more. And I think there is some legislation pending as well on funding through streaming, and I don't know, I don't know where that stands. Did that not make it, didn't make it out of, oh. Okay, that's a state level. I think that was a state level.
Yeah.
And then there's some federal FCC items as well, so, yeah. And we just need to work closely. They have, so they have a board as well, and so we can be meeting with them on that. Okay, Council Chines?
Sorry, no, I just, you know, I think we, as a town and we as a council, I think, definitely need to continue working with our legislative delegation on that legislation to see if it moves forward. I know it's stalled right now, but, you know, I think it's something that we've gotta push. I also think candidly, I think we as a council need to look at our responsibility in terms of how the town is using CAT to communicate, you know, our messages, to communicate our meetings. I think we have benefited from a tremendous amount of work that CAT has done on behalf of town government, and I do think there's a fair market value to that, that we need to figure out and look at a payment stream for that. You know, without CAT, we would be paying someone else to do a lot of this work in terms of producing and filming and putting together our meetings, and so it's something that I think we've gotta look at, you know, what our responsibility is as town government in terms of moving ahead.
Good. Okay, if there's no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion for the cable television enterprise budget.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by Councilor Santos. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kevin, so much for being here.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Is Mr. Leone on, Sherry?
No, but we do have Joe Conway, so he's gonna come over.
Okay, good. So we'll move to, we'll move back to item number nine, a capital outlay. And I believe there's a present, yeah, there's a presentation on this. Good evening, Mr. Conway.
How's everybody doing?
Good. We understand you are working on, you're gonna do the capital outlay presentation?
Sure, I can run you through what Frank would have covered.
Okay. We have the presentation up here, and it looks like, it looks like WCAT does as well. Okay.
Okay, so I'll do my best to make Frank look as good as he can, but Joe Conway, Public Works Director, I'll be batting, or pinch hitting, I guess, tonight for this. So what you'll have in front of you is basically the summary of the Capital Planning Committee's work that they did for the upcoming budget season. Just so you know, my role in this, I'm just what you would call a facilitator. So when the group's looking to get different department heads in or has any questions to keep them moving the progress forward, I'm kind of working behind the scenes to make sure they have everything they need to make the most informed decisions that they can. So really quickly, Frank Leons, the Chair, Dan Calore, David Whitman, Phil Rendy, Francis Lavercy, Jeff Jentka, and Frank Conti make up the members of that team. make up the members of that committee. Next slide, please.
I don't know.
So, just a little bit of the background. So the process annually, each fall, a department head submits a request to the Capital Planning Committee for consideration. That's broken down and put into one big master list of requests. This year, our initial number that we started working with from tax levy was 3.847 million. Water Enterprise is 875,000, and the Sewer Enterprise started at 862,000. From there, the Capital Planning Committee has an initial kickoff meeting, and they invite all the department heads in to come in and advocate for their projects. So the committee evaluates all the requests. They establish a rank and prioritization. They explore all potentials they can for seeking efficiencies and establishing some savings. And then each year, they establish a yearly plan to meet the town budget expense of approximately $2 million. So just a couple of things to highlight that were approved by the committee this year. On the fleet section, which is usually one of the largest sections that we have, this year actually was down from some of the patents I've been involved with. But $191,500 for the police department, which basically funds two new cruises for them and one prisoner transport van, $30,000 acquisition for a sidewalk snow blower for the high school, and then for my group at Public Works, a new front-end loader to replace our 1990 equipped with a snow plow. Couple of buildings highlights for you. $25,000 is being recommended to fund to refinish the gym floor at the Woodville School. There's also $20,000 in bathroom renovations for the civic center, and $51,000 for new carpet at the BV Library. Some miscellaneous things that didn't necessarily fit into the buildings of fleet category. There's $150,000 for an aggregate screener for my group. This will live in the Haunt Street and start screening out and recycling some of the material that comes in during yard waste days. On the Sewer Enterprise side, we're going to be replacing a forced sewer main, which is essentially a pumped pipe that we have on Spalding Street. And then the Walton School playground replacement for $160,000. So it's been, we've been undertaking in the group to try to get one new playground a year and cycle through all of them. So that will just be continuing that trend for fiscal '23 of approved. So the recommended appropriation on the tax levy side is to be 100 even. On the Water Enterprise side, it's 875,000. And for the Sewer Enterprise, it's a total of 862,000.
Excellent. Thank you, Joe. Good job pinch hitting there.
I might say, Madam Chair, if I could, starting with a tax levy, request list of 3.8 million is a lot lower than it used to be years ago. So we have done a really good job as a community whittling that down. I think we should think in our minds, and I'm thinking in my mind, that each year, looking at our capital and increasing it by 5% a year, this is about a little bit more than 5% than last year. I think it's something we should keep going because it is important that, for a lot of reasons. But it does provide a better service and a more efficient service because, you know, replacing a 1990 vehicle, you know, certainly we're getting much better gas mileage and much better, you know, product on that. The other thing that I'm really proud about, and unless something changed, there are no leases in here, correct, Joe? These are all?
Oh, not one.
All, not one lease. Years ago, we were really in, we didn't have the money. We ended up leasing a lot of our vehicles and what, and the fleet particularly, and IT. We did a huge IT lease. None of that is in here. We're just rolling off some of the old leases that we had. So it's great that we're actually, you know, getting new things forward. And hopefully, you know, through some other grants and through items that we have going into the state legislature and what have you, and we're going to, you know, whittle away at this even more. So I'm pretty pleased with this. Great, great committee. They work really well and really hard, and they really care about the community. They go out on field trips and look at, look at things. It really is, it really is, it was a great job this year by Frank and his crew, and of course, Joe shepherding them through.
The tour guide, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think I attended the first meeting. It was, it's a very impressive group, very thoughtful group. Any comments or questions? Counselor Nambroski?
I think there's probably no greater gift to this town than an aggregate screener at the pit.
At the pit?
At the pit.
We need a field trip to go see them.
Absolutely. So I encourage everyone, once we get that, we'll have a ribbon cutting. It'll be a whole thing. It'll be great. But I think this is great. I mean, I think it's well balanced, too. I was at the playground over the weekends and just seeing the number of kids that are coming out to that. So I like that we have that rolling, you know, improvement project for the playgrounds across the board, because I was down by the lake. And I mean, that, it was like packed, you know, with kids. So it's good that we're able to do that and be able to invest in so many different areas, too. Like, it's such a broad swath of the community, so I think that's great. And I think Joe did a phenomenal job pitch hitting, too.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it.
Counselor Chines?
Thank you. First of all, again, great job, Joe. And I have to say, I really am impressed with the job that our departments do in terms of stretching the resource that they have as well as they do. I mean, thinking about the fact that you're replacing a 32-year-old front-end loader, I mean, my guess is that's not a piece of equipment that sees a lot of light duty. And so the fact that we've kept that kind of up and running for as long as we have is really something. I just had a question. I raised this a couple of weeks ago. Maybe Madam Chair threw you to Mr. Mayo. But I wanted just to understand and see if we could reconcile some of the prior year capital spend, particularly for fiscal '21, I believe, where we did cut capital down to a million because of the uncertainty around COVID. And you had indicated that with some of the other COVID funds that we had, we probably ended up spending about two.
We got close. I mean, we did a lot with the HVAC systems at the schools.
Yep.
And actually, they were new, new generator at town hall, things that were on our list that we didn't, plus some of the other items. I think we got probably close to around $600,000 or $700,000. So maybe we were 400 short, but this seemed like a pretty, but I think with some of the other monies that's coming through the, through the state and maybe through the ARPA, I think we'll bring that up.
Okay.
But I think we're in, we pretty much brought it back to a lot of, a lot of areas.
Got it. Maybe with a little bit of, you know, a 30% or so difference.
Exactly.
But, so, looking at that year, so it sounds like we, you know, we did sort of spend close to our target.
Right.
But we may not have necessarily spent on the projects that we would have approved had we had a full $2 million capital budget. And so I guess the question is, as we look at kind of the cumulative effect of fiscal 2021, are there things that, you know, have been on that kind of capital priority list that maybe would have made it to the fore earlier than they are now, that we should potentially look at, you know, having some augmented spend to try to address?
Yeah. I'd have to relook at that. I probably would have done another playground in there.
Okay.
Particularly for handicapped accessibility. But putting that through in a different way. I think that really, most of the tier one stuff, Joe, I think we got anyway, right? We were going down to tier two.
Okay.
You know, Joe always wants more trucks, but I don't, you know.
Well, my expectation is he'll be able to keep a truck for 32 years.
Yeah, I know. See, he doesn't get anymore, right?
That's, that's the goal. The depreciation cycle is going to be extended, for sure.
As long as they meet the new fleet policy.
Right, that's right.
So Counselor Chines, just to elaborate on that a little bit, when that happened, the Capital Planning Committee basically took, you know, the information from people like myself, the school department, the police department, and then we all kind of prioritized and ranked all of our requests as they went through. So they knew heading into the year, whether we're facing some uncertainty, you know, if I had five requests, two of them were must haves, and then the rest of them, you know, we were considering minstahs. So they kind of took that approach to it. I would say, some of the things that were listed on that, especially HVAC related, we were able to, like Steve had said, accomplish a lot of that just because of the way some of the federal funding became available. What we found out, for at least one of the school buildings, was that it was a complete system that was up to be replaced. We ended up fixing it with a $19,000 part. That probably wouldn't have been the approach that we did, because it only would have got us about five years. But because of the way the funding came over, we were able to do that and effectively put a tourniquet on the problem instead of just band-aiding it and crossing our fingers to get the funding at the end of the year. So it really allowed us to get a little bit more proactive on some of those related things that have a tendency to become an albatross on some of these requests down the road.
Okay. Great. Thank you. My only request is just, as we go through, particularly as we think about the use of ARPA funds, if there are things that we've deferred or, you know, things that maybe we were, you know, we're a year behind where we'd like to be, things like, you know, playground equipment, just that we keep that in mind for the future again, so that, you know, we're, we're kind of getting ourselves back to, I think, where we would have hoped to have been absent COVID. But really, appreciate the thought that went into this. I know we obviously juggled around a whole lot of different pools of money in fiscal 2021, and, you know, we're kind of creative in terms of thinking about how to address some of the needs. So appreciate, Mr. Conway, all the work that went into that.
Good.
Thank you.
Any additional input, discussion, questions? No? So, do we have a final number on this? Not sure I have it here.
You did.
It was.
It was on the slide.
Yeah, it was on the slide. Can we go back? Very good. Thank you. So, we need a motion for capital outlay of 2.1 million from tax levy, 875,000 from Water Enterprise, and 862,000 from the Sewer Enterprise. So moved.
Seconded.
So moved by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. Any additional discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Joe, for doing that.
Thanks, Joe.
And please pass on our thanks to the Capital Committee as well.
Absolutely.
Okay. Item number 11, renewal of boating license. I believe we may have someone from the Boys and Girls Club. It's a true sign of summer when we're talking about boating contracts on a beautiful spring day.
Mr. Chairwoman, how are you?
Good. Okay, we are here to talk about a renewal of the boating license.
No, thank you. Anthony Guardia, 27, Davieland, Wakefield. I'm with the Boys and Girls Clubs of Stonem and Wakefield. And they're not on the screen, but they are with me in case anybody has any questions. It's John Brinkman, Adam Rogers, Katie Cafferty, and Amanda Haley. And that's basically the team that does everything from the marketing to the running of the boats on the lake, to all the safety issues, and all our community programming. They do all the work. I just get to come here and talk to you, so.
Well, we know it takes a team.
No, with that said, we have a, we did a very, very quick PowerPoint presentation to recap what we did last year and what our plans are for this year. So I see WCAT already has it up, so I'm just going to go through. Last year, we started on the, we were awarded the RFP on the 24th. We opened in the 26th, and we closed on the 10th. We have 21 single kayaks, eight double kayaks, two pedal boats, and the 13-foot Boston Whaler Safety Boat. In the course of the year, we had 2,300 renters, and we had tremendous reviews, whether it was on Groupon or Google or on Facebook. Amanda and her team just did an amazing job. And we didn't capture it in this PowerPoint or in this slide, but especially through Groupon, we attracted people to Wakefield through a wide array. We had people coming from North Andover, from Everett, from Edford. These were people coming to our town, visiting our lake, and hopefully enjoying the downtown businesses afterwards. I don't know who's controlling the PowerPoint, but if you could go to the next slide. Our community impact, last year, we worked Wakefield Main Streets and distributed 1,250 coupons to different boaters. Everybody who boated basically got a map with coupons in it to downtown Wakefield. We had 215 clicks on the QR code. You can see an example of it below. We awarded passes through the Wakefield Library Summer Reading Program. We provided Wakefield teenagers with 1,000 hours of summer employment, and we did extra projects with the Friends of Lake Quanapawit to do cleanup. We actually worked with some of the commercial office parks around there to offer the boating as an amenity. We had, it was a great team project. Bill over, Bill Spalding over at the Friends of Lake Quanapawit asked us to keep count of the geese. So we did that, and we have notebooks of how many geese visited the common throughout the summer. I have no idea why. But we have that, and we shared that with them as. We collaborated with a ton of community groups from fundraising, and we expect to do that again. But everything from PTOs to the Boy Scouts to Boston Marathon runners, we were very lucky. So if you could just go to the final slide, which will talk about our plans for the upcoming year. We want to open Memorial Day weekend. We're planning on, again, we want to try to close that first or second week of October. We have a new registration and scheduling website. We hope to continue to do everything we spoke of, but we've already had some discussions about new programming. That includes co-promoting some programs with Quanapawit Yacht Club. We got some extra funding this year from the National Grid Foundation to do some environmental science. We're going to continue the Library Pass program. We have spoken with Dan McGrath about doing kayaking lessons through the Wakefield Rec. And we spoke with Erin. We're going to update the link tree with directions and distances to local establishments. We want to make sure people know that downtown Wakefield is not that far from the lake. And we're also talking about maybe hosting some low-maintenance events near the boating area to try to get more people to come downtown. And always, we're going to try to continue our partnership in a variety of programs with Friends of Lake Quanapawit. I know they have some ideas from, you know, cleaning up the moral area to testing to a variety of different things. So I did have one last slide. There are four groups in particular I want to mention, and that's Wakefield Main Streets, the WCNA, Friends of Lake Quanapawit, and the Quanapawit Yacht Club. Those four, and we've worked with a lot of groups, but those four in particular are the nonprofit groups that have really rallied and really helped to make this possible. So I want to make sure before anything was renewed or considered that we publicly thank them for all their help. So with that said, I'll open up to questions. Sheri, if I can't answer somebody, I might have to go to somebody else who's here, so.
Yeah, sure. No problem.
And if you have no questions, you just want to compliment me or the Boys and Girls Clubs. We're happy for that, too.
Thank you. Counselor Chines?
So I actually just want to compliment the Boys and Girls Club on this. I.
Whatever, Jonathan.
No, this has been just a tremendous success. I mean, you know, it's pretty rare when you do something in any town that you hear universally positive feedback. But this is one where I can tell you that I have not heard a single negative thing about the job that the Boys and Girls Club did with community boating this summer. And I just think the partnership with the library, the employment opportunities that you provided to teens in Wakefield, it's actually really hard for teens to find jobs these days, which surprises me given how many places are struggling to hire people. The fact that this was an opportunity for some of our teens in Wakefield was great. I think the stewardship of the space on the lake that you guys are using for the community boating has also been something that's been outstanding. It looks great. It's clean. It's friendly. It's inviting. I am so enthusiastic to see this start again. I really think this was a great success, and I'm so proud of the work that the Boys and Girls Club did and that Wakefield Main Streets did to make this happen. Really grateful for it.
No, thank you. Thank you, Jonathan. And we appreciate the confidence you have in us.
Counselor Dennehy?
Well, I just want to say ditto to what Jonathan said, but it was, what's really nice about it is it's such a.
Can't hear you there.
It's such a.
I am. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, but I think they're frozen.
Oh, we're frozen.
Oh, no.
We can still hear you. They don't know that.
Jonathan is frozen. At least.
I think, I think you can continue. We're on.
We can talk.
I'm sure that the team is working on it.
Okay. So go ahead, Counselor Dennehy.
Okay. Well, I was just going to say it's a real community partnership.
So how's Sheri then doing?
Yeah, she's great. How about you? How about you?
Yeah, no, it's like...
Okay, I hope you were enjoying yourselves. We're having a meeting. Counselor Danny.
I was just going to say that I ditto to everything that Jonathan just said, and I think that what's really wonderful about it is such a community partnership, and it's been, it's really brought our community together and just worked with the library and the businesses. So, great job.
No, thank you. And it really is the team.
Counselor Dembroski.
Thank you for this presentation, Anthony. I think it's, I like the economic development aspect that you were highlighting, certainly. I'm wondering if there's a way that we can, or that you can, through your materials, try to direct people to certain areas to park specifically, I'm thinking like Common, or if we even said, you know, Town Hall Parking Lot on the weekends, for instance, you know, things like that, because I'm trying to figure out ways that we can get people physically anchored closer to our downtown. So if that's, and again, some wayfinding would be helpful in that regard, too. But just to kind of drive people away from the lake specifically for parking, but instead bringing them closer to the rockery, basically. So I don't know to what extent...
That's a wonderful idea.
We could do that. I think it'd be huge if we could do that.
Absolutely. No, that's a great idea.
Otherwise, you know, great job last year and look forward to it this year. And I'm thinking instead of dodgeball, maybe it's some sort of kayak race against Stonem. I don't know, just throwing it out there.
I love dodgeball.
Much less possible.
I ended up loving it.
I'm over, I'm so over dodgeball.
So I don't mean to scare people. We're doing some programming in Melrose this year, and Paul is like, can we have a Melrose team? And I'm like, I don't, I can't even begin to imagine how competitive that would be.
I think you could pit Melrose and Stonem together in dodgeball. I don't want to play the winner. We could just have an intramural game in Wakefield. Just pit Melrose and Stonem together.
Great. I echo everything everybody said. Can't wait for it to open, and some good ideas here. So we need to vote on a one-year extension of the existing contract.
That's in line with the existing contract.
Okay, okay. So do I have a motion to extend the contract for the Boys and Girls Club, Club's boating license for one year?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
In discussion.
Can I, I just want to add one follow-up. Adam, Anthony, everyone else, it's a great program. Echo everything that was said. Just when we do something like this, I know just public safety, any concerns from public safety?
None.
None, okay. I just, I feel like we should...
Very well-trained, yes.
Yeah. We should probably just make that part of kind of like when people come in front of us, just of like, if there was anything, are they okay with this going forward since it is, you know, they're who we would call if there was some sort of emergency? But I knew there wasn't, just wanted to highlight that.
No, good point. You're well said.
It's a good point. I remember we talked a lot about this last year as well, with, you know, tracking the weather and being trained and...
Right.
And I think it's all, it's all outlined in the contract as well.
And I actually do want to, like, remembering back to last year, I do think the public safety of what the Boys and Girls Club did, someone, weather was bad, I, you know, I saw on Facebook it was closed, and then when we had the highway shut down, I think a lot of people first saw it because the Boys and Girls Club said, you know, we're closed today, don't come down, in addition to the farmer's market. So I do think they took the public safety role pretty seriously as well, but just wanted to highlight that, that it worked, so we should continue it.
Great. Okay, so we do have a motion to extend the contract for one year. Motion made by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Okay. We have a one-year extension.
And... Thank you.
That one-year extension will go around to you all via DocuSign.
Okay. We will be on the lookout for that.
If you're slow in doing it, then you hold it up for everybody, so make sure.
I've also been known to do that. All right, we will be out there to celebrate the opening with you.
Great job, Anthony. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along to item number 12, the annual town election and annual town meeting warrants. I'll pass this over to you, Mr. Mo, to outline.
Yes. In your packet is the annual town election and annual town meeting warrant. You will note that we do file them in the newspaper and have them posted together because basically it saves money. So we're lucky enough to do it when everything's close enough. It meets all of the statutory requirements. This year, we are blessed with an election on Tuesday, April 26th, at the Galvin Middle School. Polls will be open at their normal hours, so this is a full election, not to be confused with the crazy vocational school election that was for limited hours. But this is your normal hours, normal election, and there will be officers for town council, school committee, library trustees, planning board, Board of Health, Board of Assessors, Municipal Gas and Light, Housing Authority, constable for three years and for one year, and town treasurer for three years. Also, we will put together, at the same time will be posted, the warrant for town meeting, which will be May 16th, which is a Monday, 2022, at the Galvin Middle School Auditorium as well. And there are 18 articles that was in your package. That will be up on the website this week and posted for people to see. We're certainly happy to take anybody's questions going forward on this. So I would just ask that you approve the warrant for those in your packet so we can get them posted and on the website and what have you.
Okay. We have to approve not just the warrant, the town election and...
Town election warrant and the town meeting warrant, too.
So do I have a motion to approve the annual town election and annual town meeting warrant?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. So any discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Okay. Returning to appointments, we have a couple more appointments to make. And in these cases, these are committees that had more than, more applicants than the number of positions that were open. We have received letters from the respective committees with their recommendations. And so I've been through those, and I think we'll take them one by one, and I will, I can outline what the committees asked for, and if people are in agreement, we can move. If not, we can hold this guy, and we can hold discussion, obviously. So the first is the Conservation Commission. There are currently seven voting members on the commission and two non-voting members with two voting terms expiring. The committee has asked that we reappoint Silvana Bohal, that we appoint Paul Wendiglass, who is currently a non-voting member, to a voting member position, and that we offer newcomer Haley McHatten by you, an associate non-voting position. Motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, so moved by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion on the Conservation Commission?
Just as we go through these, we again received letters from folks on the committees, or chairs of the committee, that I thought were very thoughtful as to reasons why they were appointing or suggesting certain appointments of people. So I just want to thank the committees for doing that, and I feel comfortable with what they're saying, so.
I do as well. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the Conservation Commission appointments as presented? Opposed? Okay, so those pass, 7-0. The Environmental Sustainability Committee had quite a lot of applicants, and the committee is recommending a two-year, so essentially there's four terms expiring, three of those terms are three years, and one of the terms is a two-year term. And so the recommendation is for incumbent Myra Session to be appointed to a two-year term, incumbent Robin Greenberg to be appointed to a three-year term, and newcomers Tiana Veldwich and Christopher Lewis to be present, to be appointed to a three-year term.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Vice Chair Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion on the slate for the Environmental Sustainability Committee? And on this one in particular, I will say, we have plenty of work for everybody to do. And it's a committee that really has been, you know, very open, so if you don't get appointed to this, we definitely hope that you will stay involved. Okay, so no discussion, all in favor of the Environmental Sustainability Committee slate as presented? Opposed? So 7-0, motion passes. The Recreation Committee has three terms expiring. Well, that's interesting. That is inconsistent, I think, with what it says. Do you have Sherri the, oh, here it is, here it is, here it is.
Edit.
Yeah, so, because I thought Dan said, because we have three here, and Dan says, recommended Jean Stinson, right? Bob Burnett, Julie Grealish. We do have an open position, he says.
Right.
Vacated by Andy. So technically, there are four. Can we appoint four or three? If you want to look at it, we can, because this says, well, this says three terms expiring, and his letter says four. You want to look at it? We'll come back to you.
I was going to say, could I ask, was the fourth position vacated after we advertised for the open positions?
That's what I'm unclear on. That's what I'm unclear on, and I honestly didn't realize it until right now. He says the open position was...
Yeah, I'm going to look at this while you keep going.
Okay, so we'll go, we'll move on, we'll come back to that one. Apologies for not catching that earlier. The Zoning Board of Appeals, as you recall, we have a new process for the Zoning Board of Appeals. I met together with Aaron Kokinda, the Director of Community and Economic Development, and Chip Tarbell was representing the ZBA. David Hatfield appointed him to do so. We held interviews with the four candidates, all very qualified, thoughtful candidates. The determination that we made as that subcommittee, which again, this is up to the council in the end to decide, was to recommend for reappointment James McBane and Joseph Pride. And there's also a letter from the ZBA recommending the same thing. Motion to accept?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. Motion made by Vice Chair Butt, seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion on this? Counselor Dembroski?
I'll just say that I've had experience working with James McBane specifically on the signed bylaw committee, and I think that he brings just such an interesting, important perspective as, you know, as an architect to this. And I think his stamp has been imprinted on a lot of the projects that we've had in a very positive way, and so I think that that background and expertise is really important. So I can speak, you know, directly to his experience, and then I would endorse him for this.
And he is very enthusiastic to continue.
Is that right?
They both, yeah, they both were, which is great. He's been on for a long time and does a tremendous amount of work, so we're very, very grateful to everybody who takes their personal time and volunteer time to do this.
And on that, too, I did have occasion also to speak with Mr. Pride, who came up to me during our volunteer events, and he seemed to have incredible passion about what he was doing, and it sounds like his professional background is in good alignment with the needs of the ZBA as well. But the other two are certainly very impressive applicants, so.
Absolutely, and...
We couldn't go wrong, no matter how we break on that.
So, and they went through a bit of a more intense selection process, and to not be selected, I'm sure is disappointing, but I have no doubt that we can find things in town, and we encourage them to reapply. Sherri, is that the...
Yes, okay, so they do have three terms expiring in 2022.
Okay.
But also, but also there is a member who resigned, and her term was through 2024. So if you want to appoint somebody to take over the rest of her term, you can do that.
I see. So, but we did not specifically advertise for that resignation. So perhaps we should wait and advertise, I think.
Madam Chair, I know we had a motion on the ZBA, I think...
Oh, I'm sorry, did we not vote on that?
Nope.
Details. Okay, so let's go back to ZBA. Are we done with discussion on the ZBA? Okay, so all in favor of appointing James McBane and Joseph Pride to ZBA? All opposed. Thank you. Mr. Chines. Now we can go back to the Recreation Committee. So I think what we'll do is we can appoint the three based on the recommendations from that committee and advertise and really encourage the two candidates to, yeah, do you want to...
Can we accept the two candidates that we have? I wouldn't, they wouldn't need to...
No, they don't need to reapply.
Okay.
I guess, right. So we should, we'll roll them over. I think we can do that as a council, but I think, I do think we should probably re-advertise and do that at a subsequent meeting. Okay, so the recommendations from the Recreation Committee are for the continuation of Jean Stinson, Bob Burnett, and Julie Grealish for three, for the terms expiring.
So moved.
Seconded.
So moved by Counselor Butt and seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion on the Recreation Commission appointments? Seeing none, all in favor of the slate? All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. There was one other committee, the Bylaw Review Committee, where we did not get a lot of applicants, and so I am requesting that we re-advertise for that, and we will discuss it at a future meeting. Counselor Chines.
I was just going to ask, Madam Chair, could we reach out maybe to the folks that applied for other committees that were not appointed and ask them to consider applying to the Bylaw Review Committee? I think particularly the folks that applied for the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I was thinking the same thing.
You know, I think also the folks that, you know, maybe applied to the Environmental Sustainability Committee, I mean, those committees are dealing with a lot of things that actually will be touching upon in bylaw review, and so it would be great if we could maybe try to drum up some interest from folks that obviously have an interest in contributing in other areas.
I think that's an excellent idea. Yes, and so we, so we, just process-wise, Sherri, so we'll reach out to everyone, whether you were appointed or not, so that there's closure on this, and certainly recommend that those who are not appointed look for other opportunities, and we can outline what those are.
And maybe also, if I may, to the extent that there were people that maybe weren't selected for the Master Plan Advisory Group, that would be another pool of folks that I think it would be great to do some proactive outreach to see if they have an interest in bylaw review.
I think that's a great idea. Okay.
And I also, just to go on what Counselor Dembroski was saying, I think part of it, you know, it's pandemic, meetings are still Zoom, whether in person. I think being explicit about what that committee, like what the, when the meetings are, how often they meet, what kind of the role is, especially for bylaws that, you know, kind of meets every five years, right? We bring it back together. And so I think just to be a little explicit about, oh, it meets Tuesday nights at 7:00, because it's hard for someone just to kind of know if they'll be able to commit. I think for all of the committees, the more explicit we can be, you know, disabilities meets Mondays when we have our meeting, so I would never be able to join that committee. But I think for bylaws, especially because it's not a standard one, just to be explicit about that.
That's a good point. I'm not sure they even decide before they're convened.
I think they'll probably convene and decide.
They convene, yeah. So even knowing, like, monthly at night or something, you know, just, just like two hours a month.
We might have a sense of how long the meetings have been in the past, give some context from past. That's a good idea.
Okay, if I am not mistaken, and I will maybe after today, I think we've covered everything, and we are up to announcements. Steve, are you following the same? Okay, good.
You absolutely are, Madam Chair.
So we are up to item numbers, it's because my term's almost over. We're up to item 15 announcements. Are there any announcements from the counselors? Oh, come on, guys. Counselor Chines.
I was going to say, I think...
That's okay.
No, sorry.
No, I just had a couple of things. I wanted first just to give an update on the Wakefield High School feasibility study process. So we are due to submit a preferred schematic report to the Mass School Building Authority on May 4th. So just from a process standpoint, we submitted a preliminary design plan in February that basically looked at sort of what we needed in a new school and narrowed 11 options down to three. The preferred schematic report would identify sort of a preferred option of those three. The School Building Committee and Permanent Building Committee did review the three options over the last couple of weeks and did select as the preferred option to submit a new building plan, where we would cite a new building on the site where Beasley Oval is currently, so behind the high school. Build new there, and then when the old school is decommissioned and torn down, move Beasley Oval in the field in front of the school. So that is the plan that we seem to be gravitating towards. There will be a community information session that is going to be announced for April 27th. It actually will be in person, though I'm sure it will also be available on CAT, but sure it will also be available on CAT, but it is intended to be in person at the Savings Bank Theater at the high school on the 27th. So great opportunity to learn more and see just really some of the amazing progress that's been made from a feasibility perspective. It's really exciting to start to see, you know, kind of drawings on a page, and some ideas of what this could look like, obviously still understanding that we've got a long way to go. So really excited about that. Did also want to mention, the Wakefield Educational Foundation is having their 26th Annual Celebration of Learning this Wednesday at 6:30 at the Galvin. I will say, this is of special interest to me, just as a moment of personal privilege, because two of my children are among the students being honored, and it really is, when you look at all of the students and staff and volunteers that are being recognized on Wednesday, they've all done amazing work. And what's great is that they're just, you know, some examples of so many people that contribute to the work of the Wakefield Public Schools. So congratulations, really, to everyone for some well-deserved recognition, and congratulations, and thank you to WEF as well for continuing to be such a resource in town. To that end, I did want to mention, since school vacation is next week, the carnival is also back for the Independence Day Committee, so it's been a couple of years, and, you know, this is a big fundraiser for them, so encourage folks to participate that, enjoy that, and hopefully we'll have good weather. And then finally, just wanted to mention, I've got office hours tomorrow, 6:30 to 8:00 at the library. So, thank you.
As to the carnival, I'm sure I wasn't the only mother of very young children who would see it and be like, ooh, left! It would go all the way around, so they could not see the carnival. Then they get older and they see it. But it's a great thing. So I just wanted to make a comment, and, you know, taking my privileges, my second-to-last meeting. My comments are not about the substance of the flag policy, and I think there were thoughtful voices with regard to the flying of the American flag, with other flags. However, as leaders within town, I heard from a lot of folks, I heard from folks, that were so deeply hurt by a letter that was put in the item. And we are so much better than that letter. I certainly won't name names, but the fact that someone could suggest that there's, the LGBTQ lifestyle causes a breakdown of families, when we have so many wonderful families and people in this town who are within that. And talking about rewarding behavior, I don't, I assume that a writer of that letter must be sad in their life, or must be somewhat miserable to knowingly hurt people within our town, and to write something that so deeply affected our LGBTQ children, our families, and to see such hate and vitriol put out in the letter, and to not understand that we have LGBTQ veterans. So you can't, you know, please don't conflate those issues. But I just, you know, and especially as a townie, whenever anyone says we've forgotten who we are, I have no idea what that means, or we've forgotten our values. I have no idea what that means. And people throw around wokeism, having no idea what that means. I think we are a compassionate community, we are an empathetic community, and for someone to write a letter when so many members of our community were so deeply hurt by it, I want you to know that I guarantee that everyone around this table supports that community, supports those young voices certainly, in light of such tremendous, the suicidal ideations that we know exist in this town based on the survey that just came out. So I just want to apologize to folks that read that that were hurt so badly that you had to read that, and for you to know that that is a tiny voice in this town, and certainly as a townie, I don't think represents the best of who we are. So that's my announcement.
Thank you. Very well said, and seconded. Anyone, Counselor Dombrowski?
I know a lot of seniors are home studying tonight, because after a bit of a break because of COVID, Wakefield Trivia is returning to the Senior Center tomorrow. I'm excited about that. 11:30 tomorrow, it'll be in person, and so I'll be joining the seniors in our community as they have pizza, and this was a really fun time last time I did it. And the cool thing is with trivia, the answers don't really change, and so you can recycle some of the same questions, because it's been a while now. But.
You have an advantage going in to meet the seniors.
Right, so I'll be hosting it, and so I will, so please, if you can make it, please come out, again, 11:30 tomorrow at the Senior Center. It's a good time, there are prizes involved, and we just had a lot of fun last time. With COVID, we're obviously sidelined, but I think it's an annual thing, although it hasn't been for the last two years, but we're gonna call it annual. So, please join me. Thanks.
Counselor Danny Hee.
First of all, thank you for your comments. It was a very, very important message to get out there, and I agree with everything you said. I also want to let everybody know that the Master Plan Community Survey is now open, and it will be open through April 27th. You can just go to the Town of Wakefield website, and you will see it right there. It's really your opportunity. We've heard a lot about people being, wondering about wanting to be involved in the future of our town, and this is a great way to have your voice heard. It will be one of three surveys, and we'll be continuing to have public forums. So the advisory group has been very active, and has been great, and encourage more community members to be getting involved in giving feedback.
So it's open till April 27th.
Just two things to echo, three things. So one, thank you, Counselor Santos, for what you just said. Second, to echo something said earlier, I'm really proud of the people we appointed today to our 40-plus committees and boards and commissions, and do encourage people who weren't appointed to go participate, especially committees where they welcome the extra help and the extra input. So please stay involved, even if you weren't appointed, and thank you for everyone who stepped up. And then last announcement, Happy Easter on Sunday, so.
And how's Ramadan going?
It's going. To eat dinner on day eight, day eight, yeah. Thank you for asking.
Anyone else? Steve?
No, I'm good, thank you, Madam Chair.
Sheri, no?
No, I'll set things.
Okay. Any matters not anticipated for the agenda?
Ms. Chair.
Yes.
Being the new guy, this may not be appropriate entirely, because it says any voting matters. But I did receive a call from a constituent yesterday who was concerned about the potentiality of the eviction of, on a 90-day notice of Dr. Louise from Five Common, and I verified today that that notice apparently has issued. So at the least, I'd like to make a formal request that we discuss this at our next meeting.
All right, Steve, you want to give, do you know anything?
Well, I'll tell you that he's been there for a long time without a lease or anything. We need the space for the expanded health department. He was told this was coming down the pike.
I would simply say that this is a 35-year tenant with 1,000 patients, 360 of which are in Wakefield, very well-known, very well-regarded, another small business that is, you know, I mean, we tout our business acumen here often, and this is a small business that is going to be in some trouble, most especially given that timeframe. And I'm just wondering if the town council has anything to say about this, whether we have any input, whether we should have any input, and what the necessity of it is, and whether there are any other options. Thank you.
Okay, we can put that on for a future agenda. Any other matters not anticipated for the agenda? No? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn until our next regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, April 25th, 2022, at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Butt, and seconded by Counselor Santos. Any discussion? All in favor of adjournment? All opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and good night.